Bethany coming today?
No.
We need single family.
Yeah.
Bethany's not.
She has COVID.
Oh, no.
Does she?
Yeah.
Bethany has COVID?
Mm-hmm.
It's going, it's still going around.
Oh, yeah.
And now people aren't as sick, so then they don't want to, yeah.
Yeah.
No one to stay home when you're not as sick.
Not as bad as what it used to be, but didn't somebody else have COVID too?
Uh.
I had it in December.
Oh, okay.
In October, end of October.
How's the, uh, new newborn? Not so newborn anymore.
Not so newborn, yeah, seven, seven months.
Oh, come on, is that time going by that fast, huh? Jesus.
Yep. She's doing great, though.
Sleep at night?
Yeah, we're getting there.
Yeah, my daughter started sleeping at night when she was two weeks old. It was the most unbelievable thing.
My kids have.
My son's still done, he's thirty-seven.
Yeah. Yeah, not everyone can.
But he doesn't cry out for you.
No, he doesn't cry out, doesn't want icy cold water at two o'clock in the morning. Icy cold.
Hey, seven o'clock. Time for the Wednesday, February eighth, twenty twenty-three Planning Commission meeting. Roll call.
Steve Haven in Lake Enchantment. Dennis Ferraro, Eagles Nest Road.
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Linda Winslow in Norwood Street.
Eric Cowers, Staff Player.
Jason McCarthy, Planning and Zoning Ministers.
Approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
You're gonna look good. Okay, discussion? Nope, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. About the minutes from January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Lots of group helps make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
A opposed? Public comment? Since there is no one here, I don't think we're gonna get any public comment. So we'll move right on in the new business, six A, housing types and uses. Proposed zoning ordinance amendments discussion. Eric or Jason?
I'll take this one. Um, so we've been talking a lot about housing, different housing types. Things that we may be able to do to try to incur either A, more housing, or B, more affordable housing. And in looking at, uh, the toolkit that, um, Michigan Association of Planning put out, there were a number of low-hanging fruit opportunities zoning-wise that I thought that we could explore. So please keep in mind that tonight's discussion, uh, although you do have some proposed zoning tax amendments, these are very preliminary. Okay, so this is just us kind of writing on a whiteboard and, uh, seeing what sticks. So, um, the first thing, uh, in Article Two was the proposal to add accessory dwelling unit as a definition. Typically, in a zoning ordinance, you're gonna identify something and then either allow it or not allow it in one of your zoning districts or multiple zoning districts. So, um, this definition came, um, from American Association of Planings, Urban Planner's Dictionary. Um, there's about five thousand definitions in that document. But I picked the one that I thought most appropriate to us. So what is an accessory dwelling unit? A residential dwelling unit, but not a mobile home or an RV, located on the same lot as a single-family dwelling unit, either within the same structure as a single-family dwelling unit, attached to it, or in a detached building. Accessory dwelling units shall be developed in accordance with the standards set forth in the American Township Zoning Ordinance in regard to accessory structures. So what that essentially means is that it would meet, uh, height and bulk requirements, setbacks, et cetera. Uh, and only in those districts where the use is listed as a permitted or a special use. Um, I think that's a big one because, um, from a financial standpoint, it seems like it might be the most doable for people to add on to or do a new room over their garage, let's say. Granted, if they do put in an accessory dwelling unit and there is, uh, lavatory or kitchen facility, they're gonna have to hook up to our utility system. Now, if it's in rural residential, um, and we'll go through some of the denominations. So our urban residential district, if you look at our zoning map, is the yellow or all of Section sixteen that comprises Trowbridge Park.
Can you say that again, Jet Houston?
Yeah, so urban residential, which has our smallest denomination of minimum lot sizes, are located in Section sixteen, which is Trowbridge Park property. So that's the UR district. And then from that, you have rural residential, which is a little bit larger lot size, and you may or may not have utilities. We'll get into some of Denny's questions here as we move forward, but we'll, we'll explain this first and then take questions second. So rural residential typically has a one-acre minimum lot size or forty thousand square feet, which is the minimum lot size that the county will allow for the siting of a well-inseptic system. Then you have.
It's another gap, forty thousand feet or well.
Forty thousand square feet. So.
I get, yeah, forty thousand.
Yep, you have to have that size in order to have a, a well-inseptic or get those permits from market county.
Can I ask a question? So if you look at the zoning ordinance and you look at the, uh, the, the Article four and, for example, uh, rural residential, which is page four of Article four, I guess I just misinterpreted this. I thought the minimum lot size was ten acres to fi- to, to five acres.
No. Minimum lot size in rural residential is one acre or forty thousand square feet.
Well, what does that mean then? Varies ten acres, forty thousand square feet or twenty thousand square feet?
Um, that is a typographical error.
Okay, well, that's what.
Should say one acre.
That's what screwed me up, then.
But it also includes twenty thousand square feet too, which is, you know, half.
Yeah, um, I remember Pat Coleman put this together for us. I don't know how that ended up in there. What is the, um?
Tell me where you are.
Okay, Article four of the, uh, of the zoning ordinance.
Oh, it's not in here.
Yeah.
He's got the.
Oh, you have something.
And there's a, page four shows the, a map of the rural residential.
Okay.
And, and this is, I, I just, I mean, I, I don't know from twenty thousand square feet to forty thousand square feet in terms of acres, but it says here.
Which means he.
Minimum lot size was ten acres. So I just assumed that ten acres was forty thousand square feet and that half of that was five acres, twenty thousand square feet.
Oh.
And, uh, but this is, I guess, is a typo.
Is it one acre, like thirty-eight thousand square feet?
Forty-three thousand five sixty.
Forty-three?
Thousand five hundred sixty square feet.
Okay, so, um, um.
Yeah, we'll get to your question.
I got like.
You're, you're right in your assumption, I guess, about that. We're gonna have to change that real quick. But what we use when you look at minimum lot size is the, uh, performance requirements in Article nineteen. And basically for various types of land uses in rural residential, the minimum lot size, well, for agriculture, it's ten acres, okay? But in, for residential dwelling, it's forty thousand square feet. Now, if you have water and utility services running in front of your property, you can have a twenty thousand square foot lot because you're not required to have, um, well-inseptic, okay? So.
Is that scenic residential higher?
Scenic residential has a minimum of five acres.
Five acres.
Yep. So with the accessory dwelling units, it, it appeared to be kind of a low-hanging fruit for allowing another dwelling unit on a property. So I actually included that diagram, uh, about ADUs on the back. It shows the various ways that they could be accomplished. So you, top left, you have detached. Middle top, you have attached. And then interior, uh, let's say upstairs. All those things would obviously require proper ingress and egress. You know, we would take care of that during the zoning.
Why would they have to say anything if it's inside the house?
Good question.
How do you police that? How do you know grandma's not living in, you know, we got her own little apartment there?
We're just going off of if somebody was to ask us, you know.
Sure.
I think it comes from somebody looking at splitting their single-family home into a duplex, for lack of a better term. And then you would have to create that separation of units with a double deadbolt or whatever the requirements are. I'm not too familiar.
Or likewise, we could get a, a call from the county.
Right.
Building Code Department saying, hey, we've got somebody who's trying to put in another, um, kitchen uh, in, in their home and they would call us for, you know, did they have zoning compliance? No.
But, but in the case of like a grandma or a family member, that's really.
Yeah.
You know, it's not, not something that we could readily police and I don't know if we would want to readily.
Well, you know, I, I have, I have some friends of ours that built a home and they put in a second kitchen to do tanning and that kind of stuff. So again, you know, I don't think it's up to the building codes people to say, hey, to let you know that somebody's putting in another kitchen in their home.
I, I suspect most people don't get permits.
Yeah, right.
In, in my past experience in Grand Rapids Code compliance, we would regularly, regularly get complaints from Grand Rapids Building Code saying, we got an application for this, for, to put in a kitchen at this house. It shows as a single-family home and it would start a complaint and we would go investigate it.
Okay.
Um, and we would, and we would look and see, hey, there's two families living here, so we need to have them go through with the building permit process to split it into two units legally. Or you need to remove the kitchen and keep it as is, so.
So with, with the attached, if you don't have an entrance from the, um, accessory unit into the house, is that considered uh, another unit or?
Yeah, it could be either or. I mean, I guess if you did have grandma living with you and you had the attached version, which is the top middle, um, you could either have a door coming in or a, and a, you know, another door. Typically, though, you're gonna require two ingress egress. That could be a window, you know, a bay window of some kind or, you know, if it's upstairs, then there would be a, a ladder in the back, or not a ladder, but a stairwell in the back. So it's just showing the various ways that it could be accompanied or accomplished.
So you could actually use any of these to rent and make money from them too?
That, well, that would be a different permit.
What kind of, what kind of permit would that be?
That would be a short-term rental permit through the township if it's less than ninety.
What if it's not short-term rental?
If it's less than ninety days.
Okay.
So if it's more than ninety days, uh, we don't require a permit for that. We don't do the same thing as the city does with regard to inspecting all of their rentals. I firmly believe we should, but it's just something we haven't, um, really addressed.
So you.
And I think the fire department would be. It would be a staffing issue.
So you could, if you, if you did this and added these on and, and rented it out and made income off of that, would these houses lose their homestead?
Uh.
Part of it, when you, when you.
We haven't got to legal review yet.
When you have an apartment, I'll tell you from my experience, we have a duplex. And when my son lived in the bottom, it was his duplex. And so it was, he just had a hat on it or however they did it. So he had to pay higher taxes on the.
It was his house?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So yes.
So that wasn't, you couldn't homestead it?
Just, just part of it.
Just part of it?
Well, the party lived in.
I didn't know you could do part of it.
Well, that's how they do it in the city.
Really?
That's how my sister does it.
So that's, uh, an example of a great question to ask legal if we do anything with these, okay? To make sure that, you know, we're aware of the implications or that, so our residents are aware of the implications, uh, in that case.
But we're really looking at accessory dwelling units being a fa- do, you know, most people, seniors, are looking at wanting to stay in their homes and so they're wanting to have something so someone's close by to assist them.
Right, and I understand that, but you know, what, what differentiates it between that and having somebody else living in there renting from them?
But we have some of these already in the township.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
And I'm not sure how they're taxed.
Yeah, we'd have to ask if you know specific ones, we could.
Yeah, Ron DeMar's has one.
Okay.
His mother-in-law lives above the, in the garage.
But you couldn't, you couldn't, uh.
I know that.
You couldn't sell an accessory dwelling unit.
I don't think so.
Separate from.
I think.
It's an accessory, it has to go.
It's not like a duplex that you can sell your hat.
Right.
Okay.
And then there's one on, um, abandoned room in Trowbridge.
Okay.
Yeah, so we can look and see how they're taxed.
Or if assessing is even aware of these.
So, so are there minimum sizes for accessory, minimum sizes for accessory structure?
Not calling them out yet. Um, if you have an idea in mind, you know, we have a tiny home, which is four fifty or less.
But are, like, isn't, isn't like a, um, if somebody wanted to put a, 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 a whole building on their property, that's considered an accessory structure, isn't it?
Yes.
Isn't there a minimum size for those or a maximum size?
There is a maximum.
Maximum size, that's all there is, no minimums at all.
Right.
Okay.
Yep. Um, so that covers accessory dwelling units. So that's defined in, in this draft and added to the definitions in Article two. The next one would be on page, uh, the next page or page twelve of the ordinance. And we add a dwelling, comma, townhouse. Uh, while duplexes define, townhouse was not. So I added that because one of the things that Renovare wants to develop in our community is a townhouse scenario, unfortunate that property. And so I thought it would be wise to add that definition if nothing else. And that is a building on its own separate lot containing one dwelling unit that occupies space for the ground to the roof and is attached to one or more other town dwelling units by at least one common wall. And that is exemplified by this, uh, picture here.
So can these be rented and bought?
Yeah, I would, I would suspect so, yeah.
Just like a condo.
So what zoning district would that go in to have lots that small? If they're all on their own block.
Yeah, so we haven't gotten there yet.
I mean, some of those are like twenty-five, thirty-foot wide lots with no side yard setbacks, no, you know, nothing because they're common wall, right?
It also depends on the ownership configuration, whether it was a site condo of townhomes.
Yeah, I can see that.
So that, that was what was in my mind anyway.
I can see that.
So those are the only two definite.
Just, just, if you have, if you have condominiums like that, I think that the, the, the grounds outside are, are a common lease. So they're not individual lots, that's like one, they all share the lot, basically, the land. So that's not, I think maybe not getting that one, their own lot, might wanna just like deep-six that.
But I think you still own your own, your own land, though, your own.
Condominiums, well, no, it's, it's, it's a shared, it's shared, you know, there's definitions. You own, you own the space in your condominium, but you may not own the grass in front of your house.
It's usually part of a, um, we pay a fee, um, and we all own.
I think a building's better.
In our condo association, we, we all own the common ground and we all pay a percentage of the common ground. We all own the pool and the building and we all pay one-twenty-eighth of the taxes and the stuff. But my daughter lived in something that looked like this in Salt Lake and I think they owned their lot.
That's what I think too.
Out to the sidewalk. And, and it was a little wider than twenty feet, I think.
Yeah, and they, they can be configured any, any way possible, but I think that, you know, I don't think, you wanna definitely say that they have to be owned in their lot.
I think Eric came up with a good solution, Eric. A building under.
A building held under private ownership or a building under private ownership instead of on its own separate lot. Under that definition.
Yeah. Yeah, write that in there.
Before we forget it.
So on that definition, instead of a building on its own separate lot, a building under, building held under private ownership.
Sure. Well, yeah, but is a condo really held under private ownership?
Your unit.
Your unit is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, in, in this instance, that, that would be, but a lot of times, you know, even, even hallways are not owned, they're common, common use kind of thing, so there's.
Okay, let's back up.
Getting the wheeze on this.
Let's look at things from the ten thousand foot level.
Right.
Do we want townhomes in our community?
Yes.
Probably, yes. Okay, so, good, we'll stop there. We'll, we'll dive into the minutia if we get through this.
Okay, yeah.
Well, there's lots of them.
And, uh, I think we can agree that we want accessory dwelling units, at least in some potential areas, right?
Sure.
Okay. So that leads us to the next table. And this is an important piece. So this has been in the zoning ordinance since I have started and it was always a, a, a real bugaboo to me.
Oh, they divided that?
Yeah, so I'm not, I'm not opposed to this, which, that'll stay, but I'm highlighting this and proposing to cut that off. So basically what this says is, the S, with the two asterisks, has to deal with, um, multifamily residential. And it says it's allowable on lots abutting Warner Street west of Ontario and on lots abutting the north side of Bancroft Street west of Woodridge. That's spot zoning because that's the only two places in Trowbridge Park where there are apartment buildings. Well, I shouldn't say that. There's other multifamily, but they do conform to this provision. And as Linda was discussing at one of our previous meetings, we have all this undeveloped land in Trowbridge Park. We have right-of-ways that are undeveloped. And there may be an opportunity, maybe somebody wouldn't invest in that to build one or two homes. But if they can go in there and build a multifamily, uh, development, it might make it much more feasible for them to explore other areas. So my first, um, in, in Article fifteen, which is where we list all of our zoning districts and all of our land uses and then we, we prescribe where those can go. My first recommendation is to completely remove this from the ordinance because that's BS.
But it's different than what you gave us because.
Yeah, I know, I highlighted this part too, but then I went back for the presentation and took it out because there are many land uses in DD, uh, where it's adjacent to an existing residential land use or residential zoning where you'd wanna have a public hearing.
Okay, just because.
Yeah, that doesn't have to do with the residential aspect that we talked about.
I think they won't.
Isn't why, isn't the use of the letter Y a little confusing? Because why in?
It means it's permitted with an asterisk, saying if it's next to residential land use or residential zoning, you shall have a public hearing on it. Um, a good example of that was, um. Yeah, well, no, um, the, what's her name's vet clinic over here. And remember, we had to run a fence along the whole north side of, of that property because there was residents next door and that all came out during the public hearing process. So that's, it's kind of a check and balance if you do have residents next to you. Not saying that something, a land use like a vet clinic wouldn't work. It's just saying, let's have a public hearing so that those that'd be potentially affected could have some comments. And she got a fence out of it, so. As an example. So here's where we kind of get into the minutia, right? So we have, um, in this next slide, here are our residential uses with the two additions at the bottom and highlighted. Where there are highlighted, um, letters in the zoning districts columns, those are suggested, okay? So those may or may not be, well, certainly for townhouses and, uh, dwelling or accessory dwelling units, those are not in the ordinance anywhere. So you would have to just either concur or get me to, uh, get us to mix those up a little bit. And one of the reasons I provided you, um, one with the zoning map tonight and two with this map, which shows our water distribution system, is if you're gonna make changes in a zoning ordinance, you really wanna consult your utility network to see if that makes sense because you don't wanna allow multifamily in, let's say, scenic residential or rural residential if you don't have, um, utilities there. It, it would just be cost prohibitive and, um.
When you say utilities, you just mean water, right?
Well, water and sewer because if you have multifamily, you're not gonna get a sewer permit from the county for apartments up in rural residential zoning.
So all of these places have sewers then also? Within the water distribution system?
Uh, not necessarily. This doesn't show where our septic's, uh, is. In fact, if you look at here on Woods, here on Woods probably is on septic, but they have water. And very similar to Bishop Woods, I don't know that Bishop Woods has, I don't believe they have sanitary. I think they only have water service.
Jason, just to be clear, everything you got highlighted in yellow is something we wanna suggesting to amend?
Yeah, contemplate.
Yeah. Okay, got it, okay.
So duplex, um, currently right now duplexes are available by special use permit in urban residential. And in the development district, which is kind of that buffer, this is development district outside the door here. Development district is designed to be kind of a buffer between commercial, general business zoning and residential. So a little less intense land uses, um, although the lot sizes are pretty small. But your development district is really where I foresee, you know, multifamily being permitted, which it is already. And then general business has the ability to have, um, multifamily as well. That makes sense because we have, every, every, uh, lot essentially, I believe, except for way out in the west end, which is zoned for general business, has water and sewer.
So you could have apart, you could have apartments above the business, basically.
Yes, or you could build, um, you know, if you took down, let's say, Super One, you could put up a multifamily development there as an example. My suggestion is why not allow duplexes in rural residential by special use permit? Now, the, the, the issue there would be whether or not the well-inseptic would be suitable. It could potentially be, but that's why I recommended a special use permit.
Why not have it in the scenic residential? That was my question.
Yeah, scenic residential, so.
Why?
Um.
It's bigger, it's five acres instead of just, I mean, rural residential's smaller. This is more room, why not have it in there too?
Well, we're gonna have to look at the intent of these districts as well.
Kind of a little more exclusive with the scenic residential.
Not, yeah, not only exclusive, but you may not have water and sewer. You probably won't have water and sewer.
I don't have water and sewer rural residential, I mean.
Yeah, exactly.
I have septic and well.
Yeah, so that's why we need to discuss this before we go hog wild with making zoning tax amendments. We really have to think this through. So.
Well, let me just ask you one. So when we approve Phil five fifty for the smi- tiny houses, do they have township water and sewer or is that septic in?
No, they have a well and the county allowed them to share a septic.
Okay, well, I mean, that, that was a small lot, why not? You're gonna do it on rural residential, which is small, why not have it in the scenic residential, which is bigger? And you have the same issue, you have septic and well.
Okay.
I mean, why not, why, why are we discriminating against scenic residential?
I don't think it was.
No, I mean, no, that was wrong, but why are we excluding or not having it?
Isn't it up to the health department though for that?
On the septic, yes.
So we can't really do anything about that then?
Well, after, so here's my idea. So Eric and I have been talking too. After we come up with some proposed amendments, we're gonna go talk to the health department. We're gonna talk to building codes. We're gonna let them know, hey, this is what we're thinking in an effort to try to incur more housing, smaller housing in some cases and some accessory dwelling units. What do you think? And then they're gonna give us their bitches and complaints.
Well, can't we just pencil that in?
Yeah.
To allow that.
Eric probably already did.
Scenic residential.
So a scenic, what's Morgan Meadows where the man is building the tiny house, is that?
Rural residential.
Oh, so, okay.
One acre minimum.
So he's.
He's got his well-inseptic permit.
And he's proposing to eventually maybe, maybe.
Yep.
Put two.
Two. Now, that's a little bit different because then you got two principal structures on the same lot. A duplex would be one principal structure with two dwellings units inside.
Cause they're connected.
Correct.
But you know, those two tiny houses can connect too.
Okay.
Yeah, they could, I mean.
So we're gonna pin that in.
Anything's possible, then they'd be duplex.
Correct.
Can I ask you this? Now, a lot of, you know, we're looking at urban residential and urban residential is Trowbridge.
Yes.
Are there non-conforming lots in Trowbridge?
Yes.
Maybe a few.
I was just curious, I mean, are we gonna allow ADUs in, uh, non-conforming lots?
That goes to the zoning board of appeals if they choose to do that.
Mm-hmm, alright.
Then we have existing language to cover that, right?
Yeah, yeah. Um, and that's in the non-conformities section of the ordinance, but it just says if you expand the use or increase the intensity.
Okay.
or the height and bulk,
Okay.
you can, but you have to have approval from the ZB. So we're adding duplex to scenic residential, and we're proposing to add duplex to rural residential by special use permit. So that would be an S there and an S here. So that covers that. Multifamily, I left, I added it to rural residential. I know it's going to be shocking to some people. I'm sorry. Added it to urban residential and added it to rural residential.
Can we also add it to?
I don't believe so, because there's no utilities. You cannot have multifamily housing without utilities. Without water and sewer system connections.
Well, then, so, yeah.
I mean, can you have a, can you have, can you have a multifamily with, attached to a water or to a well and or something?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Well, I think you could if you had plenty of water volume and it had a big enough drain field. Because you can size drain fields huge. You know, you can be three bedroom, six, you could probably do an eight bedroom drain field, which is how they size them. But it would just have to be massive.
What's the, Eric, read the definition for multifamily. So it'd be dwelling.
They're not really dwelling.
Dwelling and multifamily.
Was that in Article two?
Under the.
A dwelling containing more than two dwelling units.
More than two.
More than two.
But how?
So it could be three, I mean, it could be four.
Yeah.
Could be a quad.
Is there, is, you know, that was a question I asked too. Is there any definition in this ordinance as to how many a multifamily, how many units are in a multifamily?
No, it just has the minimum threshold, more than two.
Okay.
So what's the distinction between a duplex and a townhouse?
I believe a townhouse is always a vertical wall, whereas a duplex could be a horizontal or a vertical wall. What's the definition of duplex?
Dwelling containing two dwelling units, each of which is totally separated from the other by an unpierced wall extending from ground to roof or an unpea, unpea ceiling and floor extending from exterior wall to exterior wall except for a common stairwell exterior to both dwelling units.
So that's.
Townhouse is side by side.
Yeah.
Versus above and below. Or side by side.
Okay.
All right.
But that townhouse, you could have more than two, so. For multifamily, why is there an S for general business? Wouldn't it, wouldn't it just, you matter if it was a Y?
It could be, yeah.
I mean, it's business, why would you have to have a public hearing on that?
Yeah, that's one thing I didn't change. So let's amend that one just for these purposes. And then single family attached. I guess I don't see a problem with single family attached being a, either a permitted or a special use in rural residential either. I'm not sure why it didn't do that.
So we're going to put S in that, in that column under rural residential?
Yes.
Okay.
And the reason.
What?
Yeah, because there is rural residential zoning that is served by water and sewer.
Yeah, but what's, what's the problem with a single family attached with or without water? Why would you mess with rural residential for that? Who cares? That's what I have. I have a single family attached home in rural residential.
That's what I have too.
I didn't have to have a special use permit.
Okay, well then, yeah, let's add that under.
A Y?
A Y.
Under single family attached?
Yeah, it should be, I would guess, right?
Yeah.
And detached is what? So.
Separate garage?
Yeah, let's read the definition, I'll read.
Of what?
Uh, single family detached and single family attached.
Single family detached is dwelling which is designed for and occupied by not more than one family and surrounded by open space or a yard which is not attached to any other dwelling by any means. And attached is a single family dwelling attached to one or more other single family dwellings by common vertical walls.
Those are townhouses.
So those are, yeah. Those are either duplexes or townhouses.
Not single.
So we can consolidate one of our definitions probably?
Yeah.
And not even include townhouse then.
Well, it is, yeah.
Well, if it's single family attached and there's two units, it wouldn't be a single family anymore, would it?
A single family with attached, single family with attached, single family.
Yeah.
That's what that's saying to you?
That's a doable.
What's, what's the difference between that and a townhouse then?
There isn't any.
Nothing. Nothing.
Well, that's why we're going through this, because we want to make sure that we have the right.
So maybe the example, in parentheses, should say townhouse example or something.
Well, we just get single family attached out of there.
Well.
Why do you need it in there then?
Yeah, we could, that's.
Well, read it, yeah. I don't know what else.
Are there any examples of that in the township? A single family attached that's more than two of them?
Not more than two of them.
Well, then there'd be a duplex.
The forest.
Isn't that great?
Forest Creek behind household appliance, that little condo unit, I believe has single family attached. We could remove these two rows.
That's a condominium though.
True.
Doesn't matter anyway.
But it's still.
Single family.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, we could, we could remove these two rows just because they're, they are kind of confusing.
Yeah.
I think those, all three of them are confusing.
Or what we could do is just take this and that one out. Then you've got duplex, well, I mean, a townhome could be a duplex as well, right? So.
Why don't you just keep multifamily, townhouses and duplex? And then get rid of those three.
Well, I think we should still have single family attached and single family detached. But we don't need, what we don't need are these
Over and under.
Over and under lot size.
So why would you need a special use permit for a single family detached home on a lot that's less than forty thousand square feet? If it had water and sewer?
I don't believe anywhere in scenic residential we have water and sewer.
Rural residential. You have a single family detached.
It is permitted.
Uh, under forty thousand.
Yeah, right. What difference does it make?
Yeah, why would you need a special use permit?
Because if they don't have water and sewer, they can't have the lot.
Right.
They can't do it.
That's why I'm, I'm, that's why I highlighted this, is probably remove this. Get rid of this row completely and work with this one without, without this, this number on there. What do you guys think of that?
Without the square footage?
Yes.
Qualification?
I'm going to have to write that down. That's why we're doing this.
Yeah.
Okay. So then townhouses.
Are single family attached.
Correct.
And duplex.
Let's simplify that then.
Yeah.
Let's get rid of townhouse.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But you're going to have to explain it to people, so you need a star there?
Well, I think, I think there is a difference between single family attached and duplex.
Okay.
And I would like to keep that difference in there, but we can just, let's extend a townhouse because it's only, so we're all, the only thing we're adding essentially then, besides maybe adding a duplex in rural residential or scenic residential, and maybe adding multifamily in rural residential and urban residential, essentially adding accessory dwelling units as either a permitted or conditional use.
Yeah. Because neither one of those would require, the single family detached would require a special use permit. You know, based on the lot size.
Right.
You know?
Yep.
If it's less than twenty thousand square feet, it's got to have sewer and water.
And the only reason that I put accessory dwelling unit as a special use in DD is because.
Yeah, how would, how would anybody ever do that?
Well, you can have single family
Homes?
Homes in DD. So I don't, I don't, if you guys are comfortable with it and you are really pro ADUs, we can put a Y here. Okay.
A Y.
Does a lot size have to be a certain size to add an accessory dwelling unit?
Well, that's going to be a question for the health department and the building codes department.
Oh, yeah, because.
I'm sure you'd have to meet setbacks.
Setbacks, fire separation of ten feet. Those kinds of things.
Unless you put them together.
So, and there may end up being a distinction between accessory dwelling units being attached or detached. If it's in part of the building, like, you know, Eric was saying, you know, okay, well, maybe we catch them, maybe we don't. And it's not about catching, it's actually about allowing people to do this, so.
It's about safety. That's really all of all the safety.
But we'll get back to that. There may be a difference there that we need to work with, between attached and detached ADUs.
Can we get back to, to single family detached and?
We're going to, we're going to remove that row.
We're going to remove the row.
We're going to remove this.
So single family detached will be allowed in scenic residential and rural residential.
Spot size.
But why, why does, why would you need a special use permit in scenic residential and have it just as a permitted use?
I always err on the side of.
But what's the distinction?
I'm sorry.
In other words, there was single, single family detached, the, the top one. I always get my, the greater than, it's greater than, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay, single family greater than forty thousand. In rural residential, you don't, you don't need a special use permit. But in scenic residential, am I looking at it wrong?
No, you're right. I don't see, I don't see the necessity. Yeah, okay, so we can go Y here.
Okay.
And that should solve that Rubik's cube, hey?
You need a whiteboard.
Well, we thought about bringing it in, but we should, we could have met in a conference room in that case, but yeah, might be able to get it in here. Okay.
I'll ask them to buy one for us.
So the idea is to bring this back to you at the next meeting all cleaned up
Yep.
with all the comments made tonight, okay?
So what's the minimum lot size in Trowbridge?
Um, the very minimum
Yeah.
is eight thousand square feet.
Well, doesn't matter.
But you have to be serviced by water and sewer.
Right, so eight thousand square feet.
Yeah, well, I mean, no, not necessarily.
Some are two hundred feet.
There is a minimum lot width regardless of the depth.
Okay. Because some of those lots are sixty feet. And that, that lot size will drive, you said to me, correct me if I'm wrong, the health department deciding what can be put there for an accessory dwelling unit? All the setbacks will decide that.
Health department, those should all have sewer and water in Trowbridge.
So it doesn't matter, right?
Health department.
Residential dwelling in Trowbridge, the smallest denomination is eight thousand square feet. And the minimum lot size is sixty feet. Most of Trowbridge though is sixteen thousand square feet and anywhere from ninety to a hundred and twenty square, uh, feet of frontage.
That's on.
That's the old lots and blocks, platted area.
Yeah, yeah, that's on one side of Ontario.
So we're getting rid of the thing, townhouse, the term townhouse.
We're going to get rid of it.
Because?
Duplex covers it.
And it's all?
And so does single family attached.
Single family attached, okay, so here's my question. Is there any reason or need to define the size of a lot for a single family attached? Because, or, or how many can be adjacent to each other?
Well, that would be limited by setbacks and lot size.
Okay. So you could have?
So the smallest it could be would be eight thousand square feet.
Right, but that's, that's an anomaly in Trowbridge, honestly.
Well, how about in, how about in one of the other areas? Just, it.
Any of the other zoning districts require a minimum of one acre. At, at the minimum, yep, so it goes up from rural resident, rural residential goes up to one acre minimum lot size. Unless you have water and sewer, then it's twenty thousand square feet. Once you get up to scenic residential, which is our only other residential district, then you have five acre minimum.
And so you could put as many attached single family units on there as you possibly could fit, as long as you, as long as you were within the setbacks for the whole parcel?
And you were serviced by water and, and you had a proper water and sewer permit.
Or well in septic?
Or well in septic, yeah.
Okay.
So you just have to meet setbacks and that's it then?
Yeah, and other one, like height, and that's the open space requirements. Yeah, we're getting into the nitty gritty here, but that's what we need to do. I mean, if you want to do this, this is what it's going to take, is kind of pass through these, revamp it, look at it again, we may revamp it one more time, there's no real hurry on this.
So what's, what's the rooming house definition?
Yeah, rooming house is a whole term that I don't even like. It's, if you have more than X amount of people living together who are not related. So it's like a frat house, basically, think of it that way.
Or think of it as it's a house where people over a certain age can live as a family. So your seventy year old great aunt and her sister and so it is. And has been, people have had houses where people have lived.
Rooming house in zoning ordinance.
So rooming is the frat house.
Is defined as a dwelling or a part thereof in which lodging is provided by the owner or operator to more than three boarders living in rooming units, none of which are dwelling units.
So it's a room and board?
Kind of.
So it's kind of like the Orchard Rest Home then?
Could be. Except they probably have to meet lots of requirements to be called a rest home, but yes.
I never did like that term.
It's a rooming house now.
Rest home?
No, not rest home, I never liked the term rooming house because it never made a lot of sense to me.
No, because people think those are frat houses.
So where, where in our ordinance are any of these Roman numerals under LUI?
They're up on the top, defined.
They're in the performance requirements, so.
What, where is that?
Different land uses have different.
Nineteen?
Land use intensities. The only reason for those
Okay.
land use intensities is for buffer yards. So if you have a higher land use, like the veterinary clinic, that was, obviously have people coming and going all day, it's kind of like a restaurant, you know? And then you've got that residential neighbor abutting. She, she said, hey, this is a higher intensity land use than what I have, I would like my privacy protected. They put up a fence, they put up some trees and bushes, and that's where the land use. Because if you get into the Article nineteen, which is performance requirements, there's a whole section in there on buffer yards. And we've had our share of dealings with buffer yards.
Okay. And in this Chapter nineteen, the Roman numerals are actually defined as to what it means?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, because I couldn't find it. But you want to correct, speaking of correcting typographical errors, in addition to the ten acres, which should be one acres, if you go to the definitions in Article two as to what LUI means, it refers you to Article fourteen oh two, when it should refer you to Article fifteen oh two.
Yeah, okay, so that's one of those things when Pat updated our ordinance, he just didn't.
Yeah, system.
Because we added, we added scenic residential, which is another article.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
And nothing else.
It's just fly specking.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
Okay.
I'm sure there's several in here, but
Yeah.
that's a good one. Uh, because when we're done with this, obviously we'll reiterate this.
Speaking of land use intensity, that one, did you notice that one house in between Fry's and the towing company is for sale?
It sold. And, uh, the dealership bought it.
I was wondering if they were going to do that.
Yeah.
Solve that problem.
Yep, so they bought the home and they may or may not raise it in the future. I think right now they're in the long term.
So does that, how does that, does that change the use, or does it turn into, is it still zoned as?
It's owned commercial.
Okay.
Yeah, anything north of Brookton Road is in the GB district, unless you get around the curve and then it's, then there's some development district there.
I was going to say get rid of that problem then.
Yeah. Well, it wasn't so much that neighbor as it was the neighbors that were, are located south of Brookton Road, directly across the street. But, I mean, we worked on that, we got the fence up and some screening in there. I think they adjusted the lights.
How did Dave Wiggins, Wiggins' problem come, come out?
He sold.
Well, I don't know if they sold yet.
Me, but, but somebody bought it.
Yeah, the hotel people are buying his property.
Oh, they are?
Yes.
So that was the solution, huh?
And I wasn't, I haven't said anything to you guys yet, but they want to do affordable housing in there, on the whole twelve acres. So that's another reason why I'd like to get this in place at some point before the building season. And then Eric had another one, too, somebody came in, wanted to buy a lot in Legacy Hills and asked about putting up a tiny home and then building another home, bigger home later, when they had, they could afford it. So I said to Eric, maybe we'll have the accessory dwelling unit in place, maybe we won't. But at this time, they can apply for a special use permit for a tiny home. And then if the accessory dwelling unit And then if the accessory dwelling unit, um, provision is in place, then that tiny home could be converted to an accessory dwelling unit. And then they could build their home right next to it.
Without a special use permit?
Correct, because it's in rural residential. The problem with Legacy Hills, of course, is, you know, lack of water.
Where is Legacy Hills?
Legacy Hills is, um, south on four ninety-two, it was the subdivision that was never built up, that Steve Belt's homes.
Oh, okay, the one we were gonna run water from, a hundred years ago.
Twelve is in there.
Yeah, subject of, uh.
Yeah.
Subject of some political issues, from what I understand, it was slightly before my time, but.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I mean, developer typically pays that cost, uh, unless there's some kind of benefit to the township that, uh, you know, we could participate in, but that's, that's a long run. Um, okay, I think we made it through my portion, and I'm going to revamp this and bring it back to you. And, um, and make sure that Eric and I'll double check our notes and make sure we got everything, but, um.
So you're just gonna take rooming house out then?
Uh, hadn't thought about it. Um, there was one instance in my twelve years here that, um, I got a complaint from Dave Wigan about a rooming house across the street from him on Brookton, so maybe not take it out because it is something that has been identified and, and was, um, enforced.
Yeah, especially if none of those other definitions cover it, I would.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's definitely an outlier as far as residential goes.
Okay.
And then, uh, we'll move into Eric's. Um, presentation on residential solar.
Hopefully this is a little more straightforward than the housing, but I do hope you have the same type of questions. So we talked about amending the ordinance for solar energy systems, um, currently, as we all know, hopefully that they require, any solar panels, solar energy systems require a special land use permit, um, in all zoning districts. Um, and we've had industry professionals in here, uh, as well as personally, and staff believes that it's prohibitive to applicants and as well as people trying to adopt, or the widespread adoption of solar energy. So in your staff report, the existing ordinance language is presented, I have included that before, um, in previous discussions. It is pretty limited, for lack of a better term. And then as far as the amendments go, I will go through them kind of piece by piece, but, uh, in summary, uh, we would be adding, currently, there is only one definition for solar energy systems, and in that article fifteen, there are, there is just that one line item. So we are proposing to add, eliminate that line item and in its place add accessory use solar energy systems, uh, small principal use solar energy systems and large principal use solar energy systems. We are proposing that accessory use, S E S, uh, short for solar energy systems, uh, would be permitted by right in all zoning districts. And also as proposed, principal use, S E S, will still require a special land use permit, uh, and would not be permitted in residential zone districts. Obviously, that is up for discussion.
So the distinction is between the, on the four categories, it's use on site versus?
Use offsite.
Use offsite.
Yep.
So the two that require special use permit are the ones that go to use offsite. The two that are permitted as a matter of right are use on site.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Um, so if you look at the screen, uh, you'll see some different types, and they do, they do split accessory into two, as, as do we, um, but we would consider them both the same, roof mounted and ground mounted would both be permitted. Permitted by right, assuming that they fall within setback requirements and height requirements and things like that, which I do include in the ordinance amendments.
We're still, we're still considering, we're, we're considering a ground mounted, uh, S E S as an accessory structure, which shall meet setbacks.
Yep, right. So I'm gonna, we can go back to that certainly, but I'm gonna backtrack here to kinda go through, um, so that top image is just our table of contents showing that we're adding those sections. Um, and then below is obviously that use table, or the use district nomograph in article fifteen, which we just talked about with housing. Um, so you'll see for accessory use, S E S, it would be a Y all the way across, permitted in all zoning districts. And then for large and small principal use, S E S, those would still require a special land use permit, and they would not be permitted in residential zone districts.
Now, I, I don't know what the status of the law is on net buyback, I mean, like, so if you had one of these accessory uses that is a use permitted by right, but you generated more than you needed, and it went back, uh, do they even do that anymore here, or?
They do kickback.
As far as I know, if you're tied into the grid, I'm pretty sure you have to sell the excess.
So that wouldn't be considered, uh, a principal use, just because you sell them?
No.
Yeah, this is all predicated upon you have a principal use established already.
Assuming there's a single family house or a business or?
No, I mean, I'm talking about the principal use.
Right, right.
So, that's different.
It's like an ancillary use of it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so just sending it back into the grid doesn't.
Residential versus commercials.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay, got it.
So, very simple, um, Eric did use, uh, the city's ordinance. And then he also had a, a conference with Ben Schimpf, and they kinda.
We sat down in the conference room and talked about these, as well as several phone conversations.
Just out of interest, what was his, uh, he was critical of the cities, what, what, uh, glitches did, or what changes did he suggest?
When I sat down with him, he didn't have as many, uh, gripes as I thought he would with the cities, and I, a- as he read through them, I think he realized he didn't have as many as he thought he did either. Um, one of them was the height.
Okay.
Um, which we both talked about here. Um, so in article sixteen, and these are a few snapshots from article sixteen, um, under accessory structures, we would be adding under C there use limitations. So accessory structures shall include but not be limited to attached, detached garages, carports, storage sheds. And then we'll add and solar energy systems, just to include them i- in that classification. Um, and then in that next section, under accessory structures and their use limitations, uh, regarding square footage allotments for different lots in different zoning districts. Um, I include that solar energy systems shall not be included in the square footage allotments.
Yeah, would you explain that? I mean, I, I know we talked about that like when we approved the, uh, Freedons. But what, what is, I mean, explain that, I mean, I don't quite get it.
So for each zoning district, you have an allotted amount of accessory structure or garage or shed, okay?
Square footage?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and we're not gonna count these as part of that overall requirement.
Okay, I get it.
That's it.
Okay, thanks.
Kind of the, and another, to explain it a little further, um, included in the city's ordinance, which will in turn maybe become our ordinance, at least puts the bulk of it, um, they state that for ground mounted, ground mounted solar energy systems shall not count towards the lot coverage requirements or green space requirements. Um, basically 'cause they're just on two relatively small poles usually, or one even. Um, and it's a panel that's off the ground, so they don't count it towards eliminating that green space that the solar panel may be covering. Um, so in line with that, we're not gonna call them accessory structures. Uh, well, we will call them accessory structures, but we won't include them in the square footage allotments.
Right.
It seems like that's a pretty big structure, twenty-five hundred square feet. Looks like the size of a house. Is there something that?
You have to have a lot over three acres in rural residential in order to have that.
Right, but still, what, what would precipitate having a twenty-five hundred square foot?
Well, it's, it's and/or, so you can't, one, if you have over three acres, you can have.
Structures, structures, I thought that was just the one for the.
Yeah, you can have more than one.
Alright.
Or you can have one.
Okay.
But at no time either shall the accessory structure be larger than the footprint of the principal structure.
But you're not gonna count the, the ones for this as?
The only, the only reason why we're counting it as a structure is to meet setback requirements.
To include it, right, to.
So you're not gonna include it in the square footage here? So you can build as big a one as you want then?
Uh, of a solar, uh, yeah.
Yeah?
I believe so.
That's a good point though, for accessory, we might wanna define like we do.
If you want to build three thousand square foot.
Right.
Let us, uh, let us research that one.
Yeah, that's a very good point.
Are you talking about three thousand square foot of vertical surface, or you're talking about three thousand square foot of horizontal surface? 'Cause it's basically standing a piece of paper on edge, if you wanna look at it that way. I mean, if you look at a, a solar array from above, chances are it's not gonna take up a lot of space overhead, but it's gonna be a big, a big unit. But it won't be taking up a lot of footprint on the ground, it'll take, it'll take up vertical space.
Yeah, tilted, it's tilted. Good, good point.
Yeah, good point, good question, we didn't, we didn't really think of.
But this is an actual building though.
Yeah.
This isn't the.
Yeah, no, he's talking about accessory structures, any accessory structures on them, but if you have anything over, what, twenty-five hundred square feet, you can't put up a solar panel, right? Even if you're not counting it as square footage, if the accessory structure you have on there is the maximum size you can have for that parcel, you can't put up a solar array, is that right, or you can?
Yeah, we're not counting it as. It's not being counted as a, as a building size, like a garage or a shed, it's being counted as an accessory structure, because in the definition of structure, all structures shall meet setback requirements.
Someone has to go on the road.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily. Uh, Mr. Zenti at the bottom of Warner has one that's on the ground.
Yeah.
That was approved.
Looks good, man.
Yeah, we'll sort out that. See for some size.
I do think we have an answer to Jim's question as far as the in an accessory use, the size, so under definition, or excuse me, so jumping ahead here, we've got, this is under, this would be under article sixteen, um, which is detailed use regulations. This is where the exist, or the existing language on solar energy is. And so highlighted here is obviously the additions, there is one slight changing equipment to systems, just to be consistent with those definitions, and then at the end of that first paragraph, just kind of explaining that some will be permitted by right and others will require a public hearing, um, as per the ordinance requirements. Then we move into definitions, um, some pretty basic ones, the photovoltaic systems and solar energy systems, and then we get into the ground mounted, accessory ground mounted, principal use, and principal use large and small. Um, you'll notice that under the principal use large and small, the cutoff is that ten kilowatt. I do regret not having a example of what a ten kilowatt system looks like, um, but if we're looking here. So the principal use small, um, 'cause those, 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 so this is from at the bottom, you can see they're planning and zoning for solar energy systems, a guide for Michigan local governments by MSU Extension. So under that principal use small, um, those would be ten kilowatt or under, the one on the left maybe looks a little big, but the one on the right with those two rows of panels, um, I think is pretty consistent with a ten kilowatt system.
So that one that N M U put in is a principal use small?
They don't, they don't have to meet any regulations.
No.
Except from zoning ordinances, the, the government, the king, no, the northern, northern state.
So what's the one, the Board of Light and Power House, large?
That would be considered large, yep.
Utility grade.
Exactly. So we've got, under definitions, or let's see, two, roof mounted and wall mounted solar energy systems, we've got height and location requirements, um, for height, roof mounted systems shall not extend more than three feet above the surface of the roof. I do believe that is one place where it, and I can pull together a detailed list of how this varies from the cities, but I do think that is one, I think that they require that they were flush with the roof. Um, and then location basically says that they're permitted anywhere accessory structure is permitted, so that requires that they meet setbacks, um, and so on and so forth. Ground mounted solar energy systems, ten kilowatt or less, um, in here, it does say they are permitted accessory structures, so to answer Jim's question, um, what the size limit is, there's your size limit, ten kilowatt or less. Um, but one thing that Ben Schimpf from Peninsula Solar did point out, that as technology progresses, the exactly, the ability for these systems to generate ten kilowatt, the size of them will continue to shrink and shrink and shrink, so um, something to think about, I guess.
It's my new solar panel, right?
Yeah. Do they need any kind of, uh, any of these systems need any kind of sheds, like to keep, like if it doesn't go in the house and they keep it outside, do, do you need any kind of a shed for any of these systems?
I think they're all running to the house, I think, uh, Freedons example was really good.
You like these big ones?
Well, if they're big ones, then they would, they wouldn't be anywhere residential, but, um.
Don't the big ones run into the grid? Doesn't that diswire it?
Yeah, there may be a utility box associated with it though.
You should probably go see that, it's like the city did.
Yeah, I guess I don't know how they build them, but.
So additional facilities you're talking about that would be required of a principal use system?
Yeah, where do they store?
Besides just the panels?
Yeah, where do they store their batteries that get the power off the solar panels?
Some of those pictures I saw sheds built there, next to like the, there was one on a pole.
And how combustible are those batteries?
Well, the Freedons.
That's one thing the fire department has brought up, um, one, they wanna know where these are going in as they're applied for, and two, um, they've got, and I, I've connected Dan Shanahan, the fire chief, and, uh, Ben Schimpf from Peninsula Solar, I've connected them and they've had conversations, so I'm not sure where they're at on that, I can touch base with Dan Shanahan.
Well, I mean, that was a question that was raised when the Freedons were here for their special use permit.
Right.
But, and I think their batteries are stored inside their house.
Yeah.
And then Schimpf said that they have to meet certain.
The fire code.
ANSI standards or whatever, yeah.
So what if, what if there's not a basement, where do they run everything, what if they?
They put them in a shed attached to them, probably.
So you got to build something then?
Well, they probably run them into their, their house along a ledge or something, I don't, I don't know.
Where do you keep the batteries, I guess, I'm just getting at, will they need to build sheds or something if there's no, if they don't wanna go in the basement, or?
Well, no, because we'll, we'll have a special use permit for those types.
Well, Tesla, Tesla has a, has a unit you hang on the side of the house.
Yeah.
Well, they make shingles, they make window.
No, I'm talking, I'm talking about the battery.
Yeah, oh, the battery.
The battery, Tesla makes one that you just hang on the side of the house.
Is that the charger?
Wouldn't they have to be heated, or they're gonna not really be efficient?
Fifty years, none of this is gonna matter anyway.
'Cause we won't be here.
We're just trying to do the right thing, right, and allow this to occur.
So as far as wall mounted, I know we're talking about, uh, electric vehicle charger, but we do account for wall mounted solar energy systems, they may be located anywhere on the wall of a principal or accessory structure, but shall not be located within a setback, so.
So do we have anybody running solar that we could talk to? Do we know any one who's already doing all the solar stuff?
Yeah, we have, uh.
Freedons?
Yeah, we have several applicants over the last several years and.
We had about five so far that I can remember.
Five?
Before me, I mean, I don't think we had anyone other than that one couple. None in my neighborhood.
Well, I was thinking you were doing this because, uh, Forestville is gonna offer an option to their buyers.
Is that right?
Of having solar, don't you remember?
I, yeah, it was in there.
You had, oh, you had, oh, they, did they, did you pull that out of them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're gonna offer an option.
Well, we talked to Renovare about using it also, so we'll see, uh, we'll see how it goes.
It's good, we're working on it.
Yeah.
Whiles we're doing it, while we do, uh, wind energy to them, we'll put windmills up.
Those are a little more controversial.
I do note that we do not address the wind energy section in here at all, 'cause there is pretty extensive language on that already.
So, so the school did talk about, Vanderbilt did talk about using some of this, I don't know that they've done anything?
They, their permit was approved, I don't think they've started construction.
So we can ask, the superintendent is coming to the next county board meeting.
There you go.
Isn't that the next one, I think?
So moving on to number three here, just a thing I wanna point out, ground mounted solar energy systems, ten kilowatts or less. Um, location and setbacks, they would need to meet all of those in any, in the subject zoning district, but under height. Um, the height of the solar energy system in any mounts shall not exceed ten feet when oriented at maximum tilt. And when within ten feet of a residential lot line, and shall not exceed eighteen feet on a residential property when it's with. Um and when within ten feet of a residential lot line and shall not exceed eighteen feet on a residential property when it's within twenty feet of a residential lot line. So if they're closer to that lot line, it needs to be shorter. But if they're farther away from that lot line, it can be a taller system.
But not taller than the house?
Not taller than the house. And I do with that, again, that height section there and then under two, um that is one place, I do believe, that eighteen feet that we have in the cities is fifteen. So that was one item that Ben Schimpf had pointed out. That's with the way systems are now and the way, especially in this climate, the tilt that is needed to shed the snow. Um eighteen feet is a little more common in the industry, so.
I was kind of amazed at the State of the Union address last night when Joe said, we're gonna be using gas and oil for quite a while yet.
Ten more years?
And that was quite a while.
All right.
Is that covered?
Just a little bit more. Let's see. So for utility grade, ten kilowatt or more, the height, um height limit would also be eighteen feet. Um and then under general standards, that talks about permit requirements, um batteries. So if solar storage batteries are included as part of the solar collector system, they must be placed and installed according to all requirements. Pointing out some typos here as I go. Um to all requirements set forth in the National Electric Code and the State Fire Code when in operation. When no longer in operation, the battery shall be disposed of in accordance with the laws and regulations of the township and any other applicable laws and regulations regulating to hazardous waste disposal.
Should we reference the county building department in there?
Yep, we can do that too. Um the important thing I wanna note under this general standard section is the um removal provisions. Um so it is, this may be a little bit more applicable for, say, a utility grade installation. Um but I do believe the city requires that the applicant or the person or entity building the installation submit a removal plan. Um when the system is no longer functioning or no longer um being used.
Is twelve months reasonable amount of time?
That's pretty common. Pretty common with abandoned signs or.
Okay. Doesn't seem like long, hardly long enough in the U P. But if that's the standard.
So in, in the proposed language here, um as a condition of approval, the township may require that the property owner enter into an agreement with the township for the removal of the solar energy system upon disuse or abandonment of the system.
If there's a written agreement.
We may wanna make that a shall.
Yeah.
And then put in the three sixty-five.
And then there are, there's language there to say that um if they don't abide by that agreement or they don't remove it within the timeframes provided that the township can do it themselves. So.
Or ticket it if they don't have a written agreement.
So it becomes a property maintenance issue.
How come there's two different things there? Whether you have an agreement or you don't, written agreement or you don't have a written agreement? Why would you not have a written agreement?
If it's an accessory use, I don't.
Oh, so then they wouldn't, they wouldn't.
With the removal provisions, I think the intention is more for, again, utility grade, large, large installations. And then the last item, I'll wanna point out here, um is that under G, utility connection, uh applicant shall submit evidence that the utility company has been informed of the customer's intent to install an interconnected government, or government, customer owned solar energy generator and that such connection has been approved. Um and then I leave in red, um so open to your thoughts and comments. Hopefully, uh off-grid system shall be exempt from this requirement. And I'm, so how?
An exemption, I think. They're off the grill.
Right.
It can't come out.
What kind of, what kind of footings do you need for these? Just regular footings, uh eighteen inches, or they have to go down lower than that?
Ben and I did talk about that. I.
It seems like you need some pretty heavy duty footings to keep it there.
Yeah, you want that even. We can get more information on that, Jim?
Yep.
Especially with wind, you know.
Wind load.
Yeah.
But isn't that a building?
It, it does fall under the building code.
Okay.
And the national uh solar code.
So that sums it up.
Good job.
Yeah. If you have any questions.
No.
Or rather comments, I think.
It looks good.
Happy to entertain them.
Yeah.
So we'll revamp based on comments made tonight and try to answer more of your questions and then we'll come back at the next meeting with uh another round of this. Hopefully, we'll be more fine tuned.
So do we have to bring this to the township board or is it just the planning commission does this and then shares information by the board?
Um I'm going to be starting to give the board a planning and zoning brief on the second, your second meeting of the month. Just like Lenny and Chief Shanahan do. So I actually offered that like a couple of years ago. Um and Lynn said, no, it's okay. But then she asked me to last week, so I said, yeah. So it'll just be a brief, but I'll provide this information to the board. Let them know what we're working on.
Okay. Yeah, they don't have to approve for the most part then.
Um well, they will eventually, yeah. So if this gets to a point where you're comfortable with how it looks and the implications, we would schedule a public hearing that would invite, you know, basically the residents to, we'll try to get some PR through the newspaper and the mine, or the TV six. And let them know, we're trying to make these improvements for our residents. And um uh once the public hearing happens, you guys will make a determination, approve them up, approve them down, or go back to the drawing board based on comments. If they're approved, it'll go to the county planning commission for their comment for a period of up to thirty days. We'll also transmit these to legal review. Um and then all of that will come back to the board and the board could have a public hearing if they want, or they would have a first and a second reading.
Would you recommend that uh our public hearing be on both of these issues? The accessory use and the solar at the same time?
Yeah, just to save money and posting in the newspaper for one reason. But I think they both kinda tie together.
Sure, sure.
As an affordability issue.
I like that one, affordability.
Mm-hmm.
And for, I guess, another secondary reason, if somebody wants to comment on both, why, why make them come to two separate meetings on different nights?
Yeah, good.
So if you don't have to get it, if you don't have to get a special use permit for like a residential house and something happens to one of these systems, um it's in disrepair, anything like that, is there any kind of language saying that you'll have to get rid of that after? You're also like there is in, in these other bigger systems? You'd have to do something to it instead of just letting it sit there and be an eyesore?
Yeah.
I mean that.
We can look into that if it's not there.
I think it is covered under the removal provisions. I mean, there's, under the E and F of that general standard section that talks about the removal provisions, there's nothing that says principal use, accessory use. So I mean, it's all included in there, but I think, again, the intentions of those two removal provisions line items is for larger systems. But accessory systems are covered.
Okay. Unfinished business?
Zero.
Zero?
At this time. Other than to say that uh we did review the attorney's opinion again on land divisions.
Yeah.
And we believe that the new restaurant and the new retail space are probably exempt from that.
Correct.
But we are gonna investigate the uh.
Panera with the drive-in.
Panera with the accoutrements to.
Does this not have a footprint of the building?
The footprint, yeah. Thank you, Pat Boy.
I guess I kinda had a question on that too. Did uh, did they get approved by MDOT for those driveways?
Not yet. I did sit in on a meeting. Um so that meeting was basically MDOT wants X, uh the development team is going to propose either X or Y and then go back to MDOT next week. But I suspect it'll be ironed out by the end of next week.
Does MDOT want something different than what they have proposed?
Um, MDOT wants something different than, well, yeah, because they didn't really propose anything.
I thought they were just gonna use what they have there now.
Well, they do have a permitted driveway, Jim, but the point is that they amended their plan and that triggers something. Um and so that's why I was very careful and delicately placed that provision in our site plan review staff report. So to make sure that they knew that we were on top of the situation, we're gonna, we're gonna approve the site plan, but this will be dealt with afterwards. And that's what's happening right now. So everything went really well. Um as you know, there's the continuous right coming off of HQ. There's a short distance there where it's kind of straight guard rail. And there is a, you know, MDOT has their, you know, they have their technical manuals and data. If you have this, then you shall do that. Um but there is wiggle room there and they are working together.
You know, when I look, I think that whole roundabout intersection is kind of screwy there because the, the lane that comes out of County Road HQ, I don't know what, what do you wanna call it right now? That comes past Target and.
You know, that was all designed for those heavy trucks, right?
Right. But the problem is, is that as you're, as you're merging into forty-one traffic coming around the roundabout, you're also trying to get into the drive-in into Riverside there. So you're, you're going through cross purposes there. Somebody's coming out onto forty-one and you're trying to get past them in, in front of them and cross in front of them. And I think the same thing might be a little bit dicey with this stakehouse because you got a de-acceleration lane, uh lane to turn in. But you have to have an acceleration lane coming out as well.
Yeah, they're looking at it.
And then you have another acceleration lane going right into Target or not Target Lowe's. So that's gonna be some really tight stuff in there.
Yeah.
And again, anybody that's coming from the west end is certainly not gonna drive all the way around that roundabout to go into that entrance. They're gonna come in the first roundabout up by where Best Buy was, come past Burger King on that access drive and then start crossing those parking lots.
Or they go all the way down before the roundabout on the east, which is the Walmart Target or roundabout. There is a Michigan left there, right in front of Riverside. But then they're gonna have to go across too late to get into the stakehouse.
You know, it's.
Hey, you know, I didn't design the highway.
Well, I know that. Somebody, somebody, somebody wasn't thinking when they took a look at that.
How delicate of a dance that was when the Riverside site planned because they got a, they got a variance there.
I think Riverside got hosed.
Well, MDOT wanted to push Riverside's driveway out as far west as they could. And Riverside said, that's not gonna work for us. Uh we need it to be right here. They still moved it a little bit, but they didn't move it as far west to, to have that separation.
Yeah.
And traffic. So.
Yeah.
Everybody's trying to work together.
I know.
And that's the way it goes.
I know.
And a good plan.
But you know, what's, what's a shame is that they put through all this planning and they still jacked it up. As far as I'm concerned, you know?
Well, either you go there, you don't. I think Lowe's, I think, I think Lowe's suffered in business for a long time before that this roundabout configuration was done. Because I think people were fearful of going there.
No, I'm talking about the other, the other roundabout, right at Walmart there. I think that thing is all, that's a cluster right there.
I don't, I go through it like three times a day. I have no problem. I love it. Look left and go.
Fifteen mile an hour, right?
Thirty. Depends what car.
There's a design speed and then there's real speed.
Yeah. Well, it depends what time of day. Obviously, there's different times of day.
Yeah, no, I understand. I understand.
You know, lunchtime is not great. Five o'clock's a cluster. But any other time it's.
No, I understand. It's just, it's, it's just poor engineering as far as I'm concerned. But they didn't ask me.
What about the um credit union, uh, they, they get approved by MDOT for that?
Yes. Yeah, they, they kinda went um and talked to MDOT ahead of everything. Um so that's gonna work out really well. Anyway, no, no additional business correspondence, uh under eight. We just copied uh the article on senior housing that uh Commissioner Farrar was so gracious to send along. I don't have to do those, but I just felt, you know, just in case you didn't catch it, you wanted to read it, now you got a hard copy.
Yeah, it's good reading.
Well, it just kind of gives a little fluff to what we did today with the.
Freedens, yeah, for sure.
Hey, Linda, you're up. Township board report.
So the township board met on February first. Um things of interest would be that we agreed to purchase a new ambulance. We also agreed to purchase a wide format printer scanner, Jason will be happy.
Mm-hmm.
Um we are having some work sessions to kind of decide which direction we wanna go for two thousand twenty-three, which will follow along with all our other plans. We did ask departments what they are wanting us to work on. And you're all getting the minutes, correct?
Yep.
Sure are.
So good. I mean, yeah, the ambulance is very expensive.
Yeah.
So is the plotter scanner. Not as expensive.
The ambulance is a lot. And it's like a long way out.
Yeah.
How does that work then do, if you call the ambulance, whoever, whoever has to take it then, the, the check owes the township?
Um we do not have an ALS. We don't, we don't have an ALS rig, which is that balance life support. So if you call and say you're having chest pain, it's probably Market General coming. Now, our people might get there first, but Market General has to transport because they have, they have paramedics. And an ALS rig is how they call it.
Does, does the township have to reimburse for these runs?
Only when they transport.
Yeah.
So they don't transport everything.
So you have to transport and then, is there a set fee for that then?
I don't know how they decide to bill.
I think it's billed by, through the insurance company.
It, it is. Just like car accidents are also billed through insurance.
Yeah, we wouldn't be doing it if there wasn't some.
I'm just wondering if, if, you know, does that make the payment on the loan by all the transports that you have?
The ambulance?
Yeah.
Nope, the ambulance is being purchased today with our uh.
That grant, whatever that money is.
Well, it's not a grant. It's money came from the feds.
Biden plus.
Yeah, and with that, I call that magic money. We're not getting that again. So if you listen to our meeting, I, I really suggest that we um talk to the residents about equipment for our, you know, what, what is it that our residents want? Do they want, you know, do they want a fire? I mean, you know, there's some equipment, so maybe you'll see a mileage in the future. I, I think that you can't run a township on general fund money for those kinds of services. That's what I think.
So there's not a separate fund, like an ambulance fund where income goes into that and expenses is.
Well, there may be, there hasn't been, but they're going to look at um doing a different kind of budgeting with us.
Be interesting to see.
And this money comes around about once every eight years, by the way, because when I was a planner in Ashland, there was a huge influx of Barack Obama money. So it depends who's in office.
Yeah.
And do we, you know, ambulance, it's our expensive.
Mm-hmm. Keep it mopped too is expensive.
Yeah. And, and I will tell you that people who weren't hugely supportive of having an ambulance then need to use the ambulance. So like everything, you're, you're not hugely supportive necessarily of things you don't use, but when you need an ambulance at your house or your family.
It helps your insurance rates too.
Yeah, yes. Our fire department brings, so our house insurance. But when you need someone, you don't wanna have to wait for the city ambulance to come.
Mm-hmm.
The other thing is Market General has a, um a kind of agreement, is it called? They like help each other out.
Mutual aid.
Mutual aid. So I can tell you that our ambulance, our crews, our fire, our people go in and help when they need help and they help us when we need help.
Yeah.
Cause there are days when the Big Bay Highway needs the ambulance, Morgan Meadows needs the ambulance, the mall needs the ambu-, I mean, you know, you have to share resources.
So are, do the, do the firemen do the ambulance or are there paramedics that do that?
On the.
Or not paramedics, but somebody other than firemen?
Um our firemen are also first responders, some of them, and some of them are, um I think we have two pair, EMTs, which is not a paramedic. They can do limited things. And then you have paramedics who can do more. And I think we have two paramedics.
I believe so.
Now, we just had one, now we have two. But you know, they're all, they're paid on call volunteers. So um they're working, you know, they're, they're not here all the time, you know, my, my son Andrew's a paramedic and, you know, he's working in Sebola. So you have to have a big roster, I'll call it.
To cover.
Yeah, and then you need those retired people to come during the day. But we do have three people that work full time during the day. But we do have three people that work full-time during the day. Yeah, but, yeah. So, so, and they have a mileage for equipment. We supported a mileage as a community. We voted to add that, so you can look at your tax bill and see that. And then they have a fire fund, is it called Act thirty-three? I think where there is so much money that goes to pay for the fire service. And then we have a police fund. We'll pay for the police protection we have. But we don't have an ambulance fund today.
But there's gonna be one.
Maybe, I don't know. Linda Winslow thinks there should be. I mean, I think the residents need to decide. It's like the library.
Yeah.
You know, and what, what do you want as a service?
Mm-hmm.
You know, we, we'll probably do the park recreation fund again in the future because, as someone said, people, it's not just a nicety anymore. People expect recreation to be provided. They expect it.
That's true.
Yeah, mm-hmm. So that's why they moved here.
Yeah.
I guess.
Yeah.
I thought they were just coming for hockey, Jim. It's not anymore.
No. The bikers have overtaken the hockey players. Jason used to be a hockey player, now he's a biker.
So that's what I know, but you know.
Hardly.
I could hardly have things all straight, but yeah, John Kankas is a, um, biker.
He's a biker.
He's a biker.
Not the biker back in the seventies either.
Not that, not that motorcycle biker, but the other biker. So that's, that's it for my report. Um, you know, we do have a joint meeting coming up. It's in April.
Yep, April twelfth, five thirty, right here.
Yep, they'll buy food.
Is it five or five thirty? Cause I saw five in the township board minutes.
So we'll have to clarify that because they were saying a different time. They were supposed to ask you, Jason.
Oh, well, what do you guys prefer?
How long?
I work till five thirty, so you know.
Yeah, Steve works, right? And Bethany works, so five thirty is probably early.
I mean, I can be here by quarter to six, but you know.
I think their goal was to have at least a couple hours ahead of our meeting. Or an hour.
We can back.
Hour and a half.
Well, it was gonna be six last time, and then they moved, moved to five thirty, so we have a little more time.
Yeah, I'll be here, but I'll be a little bit.
I think five thirty is good.
Okay.
We got time hammer now. Yep.
Okay.
Uh, rec committee, uh, they did not, well, they'll be meeting in two weeks. I'll keep you up to date on that.
Road committee, the regular meeting that was supposed to happen yesterday was canceled, um, due to lack of business and our chair, Pete LaRue, had some procedures done and advised, so meeting was canceled.
And then planning and zoning reports, um, starting to get busier, uh, on the calls, inquiries. Uh, I had one on a short-term rental today. Um, Eric's been fielding a couple on a couple different projects. Um, other than that, we've been working on these zoning stuff. Um, administering the site plans that we approved, getting those letters out, letting them know, you know, what, what to expect there. Um. Business licenses and insurance still ongoing.
Getting prepared to send out, um, another notice, um, just to try to shore them up. Right now, I think I've got right around a hundred issued, um, and there are just under two hundred businesses in the township, so.
Okay, we've got some meetings coming up with, um, uh, the property owner that bought the four hundred and sixty acres adjacent to the Flash Road, um, along with, uh, Matt Johnson from Eagle, so they're concerned about the trail connectivity, the continuity of that trail connectivity, as are we. Um, but this land, uh, the guy that bought the property, um, has been pleasant to work with and is very, you know, he's engaged, he knows what's going on and.
Did he buy from the guy who wanted to sell it to us for a million?
No, we're, we're beyond Glenn Tolstoy. No, we don't talk to that guy anymore.
In the rearview mirror.
Yeah, we talked to, we talked to the guy.
Oh.
He's a young guy. He's like my age.
You mean?
I shouldn't say young.
One, one guy was a broker and one guy was the owner?
Yeah.
Yeah, the broker was the one, and he told us flat out, he's like, yeah, he, he came to me and said, he said, yeah, if you could flip it, go for it. So that's why he was heavy-handed with everything that he was doing with me and with the township board and wanting a purchase agreement by the end of January. I mean.
But the owner, what, fired him and then came to you?
I, I think the owner didn't fire him. He just kind of dismissed him.
Okay, okay.
Said, I'll deal with this myself.
So the, the township is gonna buy that four hundred and forty?
No. No, there may be a portion that we work with NTN and the North Country Trail on.
Uh-huh.
Um, I know that NTN was talking to North Country Trail, like the national, um, the person who secures easements and property. So I expect at that meeting coming up next week that we'll hear all about that.
And that road, that Fly Ash Road, that's a public road?
That's gonna be a public road.
Will be a public road.
Well, it is quasi now. They, they gotta put in some guard rail in a couple areas.
That'll be a county.
It was always privately used before and now it's public, so those publics, you know, infrastructure standards need to be implemented there.
I see, okay.
But yeah, there's lots of opportunity. Uh, we also discussed, um, uh, Longyear's project. Um, we're still working on that road intersection. There's lots of little things that happen throughout the week that are just, everything's kind of ongoing, but that's, that's the gist.
Do you have a sense when Longyear's gonna come back again?
Uh, it's a good question and, and it has to do right now, Steve, with, uh, a, a traffic study that they've revamped, given to the County Road Commission, and the County Road Commission kind of dismissed it, um, without that bypass as a viable option. So, um, we have a meeting with the Road Commission next week and that'll be discussed.
Cause I'm on, I'm on Longyear's mailing list and they're just, you know.
Oh, we are too. Yeah, both of us signed up.
Got something the other day, yeah.
Yeah, it's like it's already built and they're just like.
Yeah.
Can, can I address?
Construction in twenty-three.
Can I address a concern here that I, I understand the difference and the distinction between the township board being an elected body and therefore entitled, fully entitled to make policy for the good of the township. However, as a planning commission, for example, in the exercise of our discretion on whether to approve a PUD in terms of, is it for the health and welfare of the community, we have a certain amount of discretion that also impacts policy and actually sets policy in some way or, you know, whatever. We affect policy that way, right? So on the, on the, uh, Longyear thing, and then also I, I'm sorry I wasn't at the meeting last time, but I, I see from the minutes that you were, um, I, you were drafting, uh, some kind of an agreement letter or understanding, memo of understanding or something for the Renovari?
It hasn't begun yet, by the way.
Okay, I'm, I'm just saying. And all this is, in the background, or in the background is this issue of affordable housing, workforce housing. And some of us have a different idea about what affordable housing is and what is for the health and welfare of the township. And based on what I've seen so far, I don't think either the Forestville project or the Renovari plan is for, is, meets the qualifications for a PUD, a site condominium PUD, for the health and welfare of the community because it doesn't provide affordable housing. The, the lowest that square footage in the Renovari project is fifteen hundred square feet, and they say that's gonna be market, although they say, well, we'll set a portion aside, we'll try to get some special help for people and this and that. That's all speculative, okay? But fifteen hundred square feet is, we know from Longyear, is four hundred thousand dollars. That's, that's what they're gonna market at. That was what they said is whatever several months ago. Who knows what it's gonna be next year? I sent you something from Fern, Ferndale, Michigan. They're developing condominium units, I believe they're condominium units, maybe they're rental units, doesn't make any difference, uh, where they have a studio right next to a one-bedroom. And it's like four hundred and fifty square feet and seven hundred and fifty square feet. Four fifty for the studio, seven fifty for the one-bedroom. That package, that's affordable housing. A, a, a studio apartment, a studio condo would, would be affordable. That would be somewhere around a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, a one-bedroom at seven hundred and fifty square feet. And three times three hundred, let's use Jim's figure, three hundred times seven is, is two hundred and ten thousand. That's affordable, okay? Rather than, and I know, and again, I, I understand, township makes the big policy decisions. But right now, I'm not gonna vote for the Forestville. I'm gonna vote against it. I'm gonna vote against the Renovari, and I want them. I want that Renovari thing. I, I want affordable housing.
It was your idea after all.
Well, I mean, I turned you on to it. It wasn't my idea, but I just kind of, you know, but.
Motion maker can deny.
Yeah, I can't. So anyway, uh, why can't we be proactive and tell the developer what we want? Rather than them coming to us and, okay, so they show up for a, a hearing to set a public hearing and it's all, there it is. What do we do? Uh, can we deny them? I mean, I, if I could, if they come, if Forestville comes here and says they're not gonna do any kind of affordable housing and they're just gonna build these, you know, four hundred thousand dollar units, I'd vote no and even give them a public hearing. So, but why can't we like schedule some, before everything is set and decided by the township, uh, can't we get together with the township?
All this has to go through the planning commission. And that was kind of my comment, you know, when we talked about the Forestville issue too. You're gonna have your, your day in court.
I know, but by the time this is day in court, the, the case has already been decided.
Not at all. Nothing's been decided.
Okay, what, let me ask, okay, procedurally, and I don't know the answer, I'm asking you this. What happens if the PUD people come here, either Renovari or Forestville? And, uh, uh, either they don't get a public hearing, because maybe some of the other commissioners share my point of view. I don't know if they do. I've never talked to anybody individually about this, never lobbied anything. But maybe, maybe the commissioner says, nah, why bother with a public hearing? We're not even gonna give you a public hearing. Or we give them the public hearing and we still vote. No, not, not a big deal. Okay. What happens then? Can the township override us as a planning commission? Does it have to go to the BZA next if they're denied? How does it work? What happens?
Uh, I could come up with a, a detailed report of that at the next meeting.
Well.
I don't have anything right now for you.
I mean, would, would they, would they have to sue in court? I mean, if we, if we adjudicate, say, it's not gonna happen. We're not gonna grant you that PUD.
Right.
And they say, up years we're going to court, or up years we're going to township board, or we're gonna do it anyway. I mean, what, 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 what are they asking us for if we, if we deny it? Where, where, where does it go from there? I think that's Denny's question.
Yeah, what I'm gonna try to say is why waste time? I mean, well, in other words, if the township can over, and I don't even know. I mean, I don't know how people feel here about it. But I, I don't feel it's affordable housing, so I'm gonna vote against it. But, so can't we have a unified, uh, approach with the township and tell these people, uh, hey, Barry Polson, you're designing these, you know, you can, you can design any kind of unit you want. Why, why don't, why don't they come to us with a, with a design that looks like affordable?
So you wanna negotiate? You wanna negotiate?
Well, I think we, I think that we have to, and isn't that with the township?
But you're, you're negotiating on economics and not on?
Health and welfare.
Okay, well.
Welfare.
We'll, we'll ask Roger about that for you and, and see what kind of, you know, what the playing field looks like in that realm.
I mean, in your prefatory language here, uh, for, in your staff report, you talk about, where the hell is it?
I don't think Renovari is doing a PUD though, are they?
Well, they're gonna have to because.
Yeah, they'll have to.
They have to do some.
The density there exceeds what would be permitted on.
And they want, they have to go to the, they're trying to go to the land bank and do some stuff and, you know, they have to have some, um.
Capital stack.
Yeah, they have to have some stuff in place before they can ask for some of the things that they need and, I don't understand.
In your staff report here, you say, for this work session, staff is requesting planning commission review proposed, uh, zoning text amendments we believe could have a positive impact on attracting, uh, not only more affordable housing, but also more dwelling units in general. So we are involved in this, this concept of determining what affordable housing is and we're.
Yeah, but we're not specifying costs.
Well, look at it this way, that, that's township property. Couldn't we insist that they put in affordable?
Absolutely.
Okay, I think that's what, that's what Denny's getting at.
Yeah, what, did you read through their proposal?
I did.
They're aiming at sixty to one twenty percent of the, of the area median income, right?
I know, but how are they gonna, how are they gonna comp it? But, but if you read, if you, if you look at it carefully, and as I remember it, it says, oh, we'll set aside a portion that will be, uh, for that, uh, demographic.
And it also incentivizes the purchases for teachers and the like.
Right, but that's all, that's all depending on their goodwill and their, uh, efforts in terms of going through the bureaucracy of getting all this stuff. If the unit was approved to have a studio that's four hundred and fifty square feet, uh, and a, a, a one-bedroom that's seven hundred and fifty square feet, and you had these stacked on top of each other to two stories and maybe, maybe three stories and then a commercial on the bottom, and you don't have to have all of the development, all forty-eight units. How about, you know, fifteen of them being like that? And have that from the very beginning, the market is gonna set that price for you. You know what I'm saying? You don't have to worry about the goodwill and the legalities and the interpretations that, you know, it would just be very simple. But if we could tell them, but we, as a planning commission, I mean, without the blessing of the township, I don't know how far we would get.
This is, this is their biggest fear, is that we presented something to the township board. It looked great. We still have to go through zoning and the, and the approval process. But that it's gonna come to the planning commission, you guys are gonna tear it apart, um.
What's the biggest fear?
Uh, Renovari.
Well, that's why.
Cause they went through this whole process with the city. Now, in the city, it was a little bit different because they just said, we don't want that right there, um, as opposed to. But yeah, you know, the township board didn't really set up policy with, with the property. In fact, nobody's been interested in a damn property.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so it took, you know, Denny turning, uh, you know, giving me, uh, some information, you know, contacting somebody that I thought could pull it off, and then them putting together a proposal. So you can scrutinize it all you want when it gets here, but it's not here yet. And they, uh, are aware that we're after affordable housing. I believe they addressed that in their proposal. If you wanna scrutinize that more, when, when we get to the point where they, they have submitted something that we can review and you have the purview now as a planning commissioner to address that, I would suggest that we do it at that time. I can tell them all day long, you know, hey, our planning commissioner wants to see studio apartments, but they're not gonna build that. I, I don't believe they're gonna build that because it's not.
Why?
They also have to.
Why, what then?
They made a hole on whatever they're doing. They're not gonna do it out of the kindness of their own heart. They're gonna make some money off it too, right?
But, but let's forget about the studio. A seven hundred and fifty square foot unit as a one-bedroom, times two is fifteen hundred square feet. And that's the same, that's the same economic parameter that Renovari set forth in their letter. So what the hell? You can make four hundred thousand dollars on two seven hundred and fifty, uh, square foot units or on one, uh, you know, what's, what's it, you know what I'm saying?
I, I do understand what you're saying and, uh, I appreciate your comments, but I don't know the ethics of, um, you know, trying to get somebody in, in that, to shoehorn somebody in that, that category.
I know, but either we either shoehorn them or we, or we throw the shoes out the window when they get here, and it's a waste of their time.
But that's not really the right thing to do though. Cause you're, you're, you're trying to get this property sold, cause it hasn't sold in all these, all the, all this time.
That's the, that's the prime consideration.
Well, the township would like to get the money for it, and there's been no taxes on there for all these years, like Linda said.
I think it's been ten years.
It's been ten years of it sitting there. So you have to kind of take that into account.
I understand, Jim. I understand.
And you have to say, all right, well, how much money are we gonna make off this, a township?
Well, I guess what Denny was saying, if you have, have a fifteen hundred square foot building and you cut it and. But I guess what Denny was saying, if you have, have a fifteen hundred square foot building, and you cut it in half, and you can say, make the same amount of money off it, whether it's one unit or two, what's the what there?
I'm not disagreeing with that, but first of all, are they even looking for rentals? It seems like they just...
No, we're talking about selling them, selling them as one-bedroom condos.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and that would be perfect.
So not apartments, condos.
That'd be a perfect starter.
Are there not condos in their buildings, on their, in their plan? Was there nothing like that?
No, they're all, they're all, single-family.
Maybe they don't wanna be condo owners either, though.
But they're gonna have a site condominium.
Yeah, it's gonna have to be condos in there anyway.
You know what I'm saying? It, it doesn't, and, and if you're talking about, oh, we can't shoehorn them with an economic interest, well, your point was, well, the big, the big, the big concern is the economic interest of the township and underlying the property. Well, how does that serve the health and welfare of the township residents if there really is an affordable housing issue? I don't know, I mean, everybody says there is.
I know.
I think it's more of our job to try and negotiate something so that they'll still wanna do it, and yet try to get them to do what we want them to do.
And I'm exactly...
But still have them go through with the project, and not them to say, oh, we're not gonna do it.
No, I'm with you a hundred percent, but why not, why not meet, uh, at arms length with them and say, hey, this is what we have in mind, can you do it? Barry Polson sure as hell can design a seven hundred and fifty square foot, uh, one-bedroom condo, and, and put them side by side, stack them two on top of one on top of the other, for like fifteen units, and have the rest of them, they can make their money on the rest of them, whatever, too. I mean, all I'm saying is, it seems like it's inefficient, this process, the way we're doing it.
Well, you have to ask yourself, why are they doing it like this?
Because we can't do it.
Are they doing it because this is the way they can make the most of their own money? Or are they doing it because they think this is the best project for the township? Or did you get any kind of a sense out of anybody talking with them to see?
Obviously, they have a financial interest in it, right?
Yeah, I mean, you wanna make...
But they have to capital stack, they're not even, like, the board gave us the ability to negotiate a, uh, a, a purchase agreement, but it's really gonna be more of an agreement, um, than, than a, not, uh, not an agreement, but a MOU or something like that, but...
Memo random of understanding?
Yeah, it, it all, and, I mean, there's so many puzzle pieces involved in this thing. I thought we were going down a positive path, and now, you know, it's being blown up for the sake of, you know, can we put seven hundred and fifty square foot condos there? I mean, I don't, I don't know, I'm not an, uh, an expert in affordable housing, but I will say that when they come here, um, and I'll call them tomorrow for the sake of time tonight, because it's close to nine o'clock.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I'll call them tomorrow and I'll express our discussion tonight and see how they react to that. And then I'll report back to you guys.
Okay, okay.
Just ask them if there was a reason why they couldn't build some of those smaller units, so some of those people that want something more affordable, they'll do it, if, if...
I think we all know what the answer is, but for the sake of, uh...
Money.
Yeah, I'll ask them that.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I know you did a great job in...
Well, I didn't do anything, Denny, I called and said, hey, we got five acres. You guys wanna do something on this property? It's gonna cost you five hundred thousand dollars, I think we've got some partners that'd be willing to work for it, with you. And I think our Township Board would support a demonstration of affordable housing on this property. They presented that, I don't know how much more affordable we can get, but we'll see.
Yeah, okay, okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, the last thing? Any announcements? Any, uh, no public comments, since there's no public comment, or public here again? And how about additional comments by planning commissioners?
Yeah, I got a couple, um, first of all, tech is number two in CCHA in hockey, I just wanna bring that up. They're thumping the number twelve in the nation in hockey. They got a goalie...
Point of order.
And we're at Carnival tomorrow, so go tech.
Happy anniversary to you going up there.
Thanks, you bet, thirty years we've been going up there, can't I?
That's just cause they're doing that ice mat, ice mass up there. We got guys on their side.
Nice thing there, yeah. But yeah, no, it's good.
Denny, any more comments?
I've said enough. Too much, bro.
You make us think, Denny, that's not bad, eh?
You're kicking the heat off of me, Denny.
Linda.
Yeah, I'm taking the heat off, heat off of Steve, yeah.
I just had a question about, did you ever look at those Nirvana lakes?
Yes, and I did send them a zoning violation letter, and they are in the process of replacement.
Okay.
Oh.
Those are pretty bright.
They are.
And, and we need to get the businesses to get their address numbers on their buildings.
Yeah, I think we addressed that.
So in the recent water bill mailing, we included a blurb about the requirements and the, they need to be three inches by one inch and all the, whatever they are, I don't know them off the top of my head.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and in addition to that, on zoning compliance forms and site plan review forms and any related forms, we'll include a line item checkbox that says you need to include that.
We'll make it a condition of approval on any site plan.
You put up your name.
And, and people too are supposed to do it, but do you wanna record on that? That, that's what's happening, cause they're always asking.
Oh, sure, yeah. I think Dan Shanahan, didn't you update you guys on that?
I don't know, no.
You, not at the last meeting?
I was, and I would say, no, Dan's trying to get the ambulance.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um, and on your houses, you're supposed to have, I know it says three inches, but firemen need them bigger. They can't see your house numbers, and your mailbox doesn't count. So get your, get your numbers on.
Do we have a plowing fund in the township?
What kind of a plowing fund? Do you want him to plow your drives?
Those roads are so terrible. Oh, I know what I wanted to ask you. I was just looking at this water distribution map, and I, I noticed all the subdivisions have water, except for the one I'm in. And I thought, how, how did that happen? Cause Mr. Adamini lived there?
You were so awestruck by that beautiful home, you never thought to do due diligence on your utilities.
You know, you should ask Ray Adamini about that.
Yeah.
I know, that's what I'm wondering. I know it's before your time and everything, but...
No, way before, that was a seventy's...
Look at how much money Ray saved not putting water in there.
Mm-hmm.
After he got the land.
Yeah.
And he's already, uh, what, dead and gone, right?
Yep.
Got the land from Esther by...
Now his kids are...
The funny thing about Bishop Woods is walking down the Iron Ore Heritage Trail and seeing, uh, fire hydrants in the woods at the bottom of the, uh,
Yeah.
railroad grade. My wife, or Carol, asked me about that, she's like, why are those there? I was like, don't even ask me why. That's how subdivision gets built, behind, behind closed doors.
Do you think...
That stuff doesn't really happen anymore.
You think we could get an injunction to force them to put water up there now? There are errors?
No.
Not that I have any need for some of the other people.
Not that you have any trouble today.
Yeah.
I just, I always worry about that, when I see all these people watering their yards in the summer, I'm, oh, you're using that water table up.
See, we pour our water on the lake for our garden and our lawn.
You what?
On the lake, I won't let Tade water off the well.
No.
It's why there's always rain dances up there in Oak Hill.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I never realized that before, it's the only subdivision that... Yeah, or Forest Hills, but that's not really a subdivision. Okay, meeting adjourned.
Get out of here.
Run, run, Forrest, run.
Isn't that Renovare?
Renovare.
Whatever.
Oh, okay. I just thought I was saying it wrong.
I probably said it wrong.
Munising, um, project is one of our projects.
Yeah, they've got some things that are in process.
I'm gonna find out what's the median.
In market township?
Yeah.
Fifty-five thousand.
Yeah. That's the median one, fifty-five thousand?
Yeah, and I think the average, we have a higher median income than you said.
Sure, because we have physicians.
No.
Right. And the family out, the family out.
We'll have it all for that, cause that's probably gonna be sometime in April, depending on the weather.
Does the county still have all that?
It's, it's just like watching...
I'll split out there. I have...
And not, not...
That's a state of...
Oh, right.
I usually...
I guess it's your state of mind, your way.
Maybe Denny needs to know.
Might be in our master plan.
Maybe Denny needs to know it's only fifty-five, okay? Jason, would you live in a studio?
No.
No, and I wouldn't buy one. We don't live in Chicago.
Yeah, that's a good point, too. Well, he's just gotta be careful about...
He's a boy, I, you know...
Things he said between him and Steve. Give me more gray hairs.
I can tell that.
Well, I mean, I don't, I agree, I agree with some of the comments, but you gotta give them a chance to present something to you before you just blow it to pieces, and that's what I'm really afraid of, with this thing, most forward, they come here...